That permits both the general public and members of the public bodies to participate by electronic means under circumstances allowed by law. Members of the public bodies must further identify specifically by stating the county, city, township, or village and state from which he or she is attending the meeting remotely. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by phone or online from the Zoom meeting application. To join the meeting by phone, call 1-646-5588-656 and when prompted, enter the meeting ID number 83226836698 followed by the pound sign. During the public comment portion of the meeting, the raise hand method will be used to address the city council. Citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com. And at this time, we will have roll call. Councilwoman Abdo.
Here, Romulus, Michigan, Wayne County.
Councilman Barton.
Here, Romulus, Wayne County.
Councilwoman Roscoe.
Here, Romulus, Michigan, Wayne County, Michigan.
Councilwoman Tally.
Here, Romulus, Wayne County.
Councilman Wattsworth.
I'm here, Romulus, Michigan, Wayne County.
And Councilwoman Webb.
Here, City of Romulus, State of Michigan, Wayne County.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I do not see that Councilwoman Williams is on.
She called in. She called in, she's excused.
So noted. Mr. Chair, we have a quorum for this regular council meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Tonight's regular council meeting agenda is as follows. Number one, agenda. Number two, minutes. Number three, petitioner. Number four, chairperson's report. Number five, mayor's report. Six, clerk's report. Seven, treasurer's report. Eight, public comment. Nine, unfinished business. Ten, new business. Eleven, warrant. Twelve, communication. And number thirteen, adjournment. And a motion would be in order to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So move to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of the agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Number two, minutes. Two A for approval.
Well, one thing, on the minutes, Madam Clerk, I'm sure it's just a typo, but it has June 6th as a, you know, for the regular council meeting, it should be June 7th.
So noted.
Okay, just a typo.
Yep, yep, it is. Okay, so for approval are the minutes from the regular council meeting held on June 7th, 2021 at 7:30 PM.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the minutes of the council meeting held on June 7th at 7:30.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wattsworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held June 7th at 7:30. Mr. Wattsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Agenda item 2B, for approval are the minutes from the special meetings held on June 7th, 2021, at 6 o'clock PM. There was a study session to discuss changes in engineering standards. And at 7 o'clock PM, there was a study session to discuss the quarterly investment report.
Need a motion?
Motion, support.
Motion by Mr. Wattsworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for approval of minutes from a special meeting held June 7th at 6 o'clock PM, study session to discuss change in engineering standards, 7 PM study session to discuss the quarterly investment report. Mr. Wattsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally? Ms. Tally? Ms. Tally? We can't hear you, Ms. Tally.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
For three petitioners, there are no petitioners on the agenda this evening. Number four is the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We had two meetings tonight. We had a study session that started 6 o'clock for discussion of leasing of Mark Patrol vehicles and purchase of motor roller radios for police and dispatch. At 6:30, we had a closed session, and that's the discussion of attorney opinion. So the Chair this time is going to recognize Councilwoman Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'd like to ask for support for a memorial resolution. It is for Ms. Cynthia Thomas, sister of our colleague, Councilwoman Virginia Williams.
Support.
Thank you. And I send my deepest sympathy because a sister is one of the best friends that you would ever have, and my prayers are with the family.
Yeah, I understand that, Ms. Webb, I lost my sister. Been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Mr. Wattsworth, for memorial resolution. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion is approved. I'd like to say a couple of things. Well, first of all, it's Flag Day today, it was very nice event today, it was Flag event in Romulus. And we are very appreciative of all the servicemen that fought for our country so we could be free today. A couple more things I'd like to bring up. It's about our police department and our fire department. We are so fortunate to have such a great police and fire department. I'm just gonna read just a few things that happened, that we received. I'd just like the public to know of something about our, first of all, our fire department. This is, I'm not gonna read all of this, was to Mayor Burcroft, from Kevin McNameer from Van Buren Township. He said, "On behalf of the Public Safety Department and the Charter Township of Van Buren, I would like to express my appreciation for the service provided by the City of Romulus. Willness to assess our fire department during the recent fire at Harbor Club apartment was invaluable. This focus of your personnel maintaining the solely safe safety of the residents of Harbor Club, VST personnel should be commended. It is highly reassuring that our community can receive such professional consideration from our neighbor. I look forward to the future opportunities for our community to collaborate for the good of our citizens. Thank you for your assistance during this event." And that was signed by Kevin McNameer, Township Supervisor and Fire Chief from Van Buren. On the other note, we have an outstanding police department, too, that, as you know, on May 17th of this year, last month, this young four-year-old autistic child was found wandering around late at night, early morning, unaccomplished by an adult. And then, this is what our police department did. This is from Third Circuit Court Family Division, from Mr. Daniel M. McGuire. He writes this. Kudos, kudos to you and your department on expert handling of this matter. Tell your officers to give themselves a bit, a big pat on the back. There is a small child with many special needs who is now safe, thanks to your efforts. This was perhaps the best, most professional effort and follow-up I have ever seen." And this is from the referee of the Third Circuit Court Family Division. I just said, we should be so proud of our police department, administration, fire department, of the great job they have been doing for the city and residents of Romulus. And at this time, I'm going to recognize Councilwoman Tally. Councilwoman Tally.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. And before I speak, there's a young lady on the line who wanted to speak in regards to the, I think it was the fight, was it, is it Yada? Yes, before I say my words, can we let her speak because she wanted to add to what you were saying?
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Hello, everyone, city council members and mayor, officers, fire department. So my name is Yada Phillips, and I'm not new to the system, I just haven't been around for a little while, dealing with some family things. But I did come up to City Hall today, and I spoke to Ms. Elaine, and there was someone else, I can't think of her name, and forgive me, forgive me because I'm just having a brain fart. But on Friday, this past Friday, we had a fire that was on Gloria Street where the home was on fire. And at the time of the fire, there was an incident that was going on on I-94 in Merriman where the young lady had crashed a car at a high rate of speed. Well, our, one of our fire department guys showed up, I'm not sure what his name is, and, but he was the first person on the scene, and he was by himself, and he was the only one from Romulus. When he got there, he did what he could as a one-man person to get that fire, to try to settle it before it even went up into more blazes that it was already in. And then he also called in Metro, the Metro Airport and Westland. When I tell you they did a phenomenal job, and he did a phenomenal job with staying cool, being by himself because he knew the rest of the team was attending to the incident that was on I-94, he really deserves not just an applause, but he needs to be recognized in more ways than not. And Metro, that show, when they showed up, they showed up and they showed out, they had their fire under control within minutes of them arriving. And for one, one person to come in, that is, that is simply amazing to me. Like, I can't tell you how much that impressed me, and I said that I wanted to talk to her. So when I got up there today, I had some conversations with a few people, and I didn't get a chance to come and see the mayor. But I really, really, really would like to see him recognized because that, that was phenomenal. And then also, I will be doing my annual this year for the police department, I haven't had a chance to do that, but I will be doing that as well. I got some things that I want to say thank you to them about because when I, when my mom and my grandmother were sick, the first people that had to arrive were the police and then the ambulance. And they have just been phenomenal to my home, so I just want to say thank you to that. But the fire department absolutely showed out, they really did, thank you.
Thank you. We just have such a great, we're just so blessed to have a police department and fire department, as we have.
Mr. Chair, our Fire Chief Kevin Kraus, Director Kraus would like to have some remarks.
Sure, Mr. Kraus, go ahead. Mr. Kraus?
Thank you very much, Mr. Barton. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Treasurer and Clerk, and listening audience, I just wanted to say thank you very much for the kind words. I would let you know, like to let you know that that was Captain Waitoco, who was, who was the captain on scene. And you are correct, we had a, another very serious event going on on the expressway with four very serious injuries, and then also a house fire at the same time. And I just, you know, I just want to say that we've, we've put a lot of these agreements with our neighboring communities in place, and developed those relationships with them over the last, you know, five to seven years. And those relationships that we've developed over the last five to seven years pay dividends in times like this. Your fire department can prepare for, you know, the everyday calls 98% of the time, but the 2% of the time that you have the extreme circumstances is when we reach out to those neighbors and those relationships that we've built, and, and they paid dividends this weekend when we needed them, particularly Metro Airport, we have our automatic aid agreement with them, and then also our neighbors to the west with Westland, and they, they were, you know, happily to oblige us. And Captain Waitoco's accolades that evening didn't go unnoticed, I get reports on all of those critical incidents as they occur, and they have been noted, and we will be recognizing them for his service at one of our hometown hero events in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Okay, can I go ahead, Mr. Barton?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Tally.
Yeah, so just to piggyback, just to what you're saying about our police fire, we just got magnificent teams in our city, and I just want to shout out to Director Kraus and the fire department team. He talked about last week of how they became a licensed advanced life support agency, so that's a great job. I mean, just moving, just taking our fire department to the next level. So I just wanted to give them a shout out for that because I remember he announced it last week, and I don't, I don't, I didn't say, don't remember saying anything about it, but just wanted to let him know and the fire department team know, their, their work is just, doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you for all that you do, the police department as well, they out there doing it, like somebody said, but I also, we have another team I want to shout out right now, too, since we're talking about our police fire, we got, so our building department in there, too. The building department was able to shut down two marijuana grow-ups illegally set up in a neighborhood in Romulus. Both sites had significant electrical issues raised by improper and illegally installed wiring. Both sites also posed severe life safety issues. Since they were shut down, we have done, there were several inspections done to make certain the use remain, the use remained discontinued. Joe Watt was the inspector who assisted, who, I'm sorry, who assisted in closing these sites. So shout out to our building department, shout out to our fire department, shout out to our police department. Great job, team, talk about teamwork, make the dream work, thank you.
Okay, with that, that concludes the chairperson's report.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wattsworth? Mr. Wattsworth? Is he muted?
Hang on. Yes.
Okay, Chair votes yes, motion approved, thank you.
Next on the agenda, number five, is the mayor's report.
Good evening, City Council, Treasurer, Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and listening audience. First, Mr. Chairman, you know, I appreciate the accolades for our Public Safety Division. You heard last week at the State of the City, we talked about hometown heroes, they are truly hometown heroes, they've been living that daily, but through a pandemic, and as you gave examples up in, you know, last week with police and fire, they do a phenomenal job day in, day out, so thank you for that. Couple things, it is Flag Day, as you said, Mr. Chairman, thank you to those who attended or participated in the ceremony earlier today. Also, next week is Father's Day, this weekend, so if you're a father, or if you're a father figure to someone, please celebrate that, that's an awesome thing to be able to influence people in, in a meaningful way in their life. Couple other shout-outs that I wanted to give, you heard also our new archery program that we got a grant for this year at Elmer Johnson Park, we had Dwayne Parker and Jessica LaDuke that were instructors in that, that did a phenomenal job, there was so much interest, they're looking at doing that again, Mr. Chairman, in August, so thank you for the good work, and also the good work of getting a grant to cover the cost. I did want to have one follow-up from our team, and I'd like, if we could, Roberto Scapatici just to come on the call to give a quick explanation of, and detailing the, the email about retention ponds, Roberto, are you there, can you give a quick update on that? And then I do have four items for action.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council, Madam Clerk, Madam Treasurer, Mayor. I just wanted to give a quick notification that this afternoon, I submitted to Council a revised detention fencing detail. It's a write-up that kind of takes into account all the comments that were had at the study session last week. We put a waiver in there, approvable by Council only, and a couple other details regarding criteria of where fencing is to be allowed and where it's not to be allowed. So I just wanted to notify Council of that, and just give an FYI to peek at your email, take a look at it, and in your future, if there's no other comments, we will bring that forward publicly to approve.
Thank you, Roberto, appreciate that, and thank you, Council, for your input, that also makes good teamwork. I do have some action items tonight for your consideration, first up is a recommendation, this one's from Kevin Kraus, Fire Service Director and Legal Counsel, kind of a no-brainer, but a great one, "To concur, the administration authorized the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached sub-recipient grant agreement with Health Emergency Medical Services or for the acceptance of a grant funding, the amount $4,664.94." That's from Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Bureau of EMS and Trauma Preparedness. The grant funds will allow the fire department to purchase 10 new adult backboards and four pediatric backboards. This grant is 100% reimbursable with no matching funds.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we approve the Health Emergency Medical Services sub- recipient of the grant agreement in the amount of $4,600.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wattsworth, supported by Mrs. Webb, for Health Emergency Medical Services Subrecipient Grant Agreement. In discussion? Here, no discussion, roll call vote. Mr. Wattsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The next item for consideration is a recommendation from Carol Mays, our City Planner, Kevin Lozen, Human Resource Director and Legal Counsel. This one is to concur with the administration authorized the mayor and clerk to amend the contract for recording secretary services from $100 per planning commission and ZBA meeting to $125 per meeting. That would begin July 1 of this year. Those funds have been verified and available for this expenditure.
Do the Chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and authorize the mayor and the clerk to amend the contract for the recording secretary services.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for independent recording secretary service amended contract. In discussion? Here, no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The next request is a recommendation from Roberto Scapatici, our DPW Director, and this is to concur with the administration authorized the attached change order number one to ITB 20/21-11. That's for all work outlined in the change order number one that's listed, to backfill the 400 feet of ditching along Barth Road and place storm sewer below grade to discharge storm water at a cost of $30,050. Those funds have been verified and available out of the construction progress account that's listed.
Chairman, I will, I will move that we approve the Barth Road paving and, and water main replacement program. It's the ITB 20/21-11 in the change order, and I have a question.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Mr. Watts, it's been motioned by Mr. Wattsworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, for buff reading, paving, and water main replacement program, which ITB 20/21-11, change order number one, discussion, Mr. Wattsworth.
If I could, Mayor, to, Roberto, does this mean that there will no longer be any ditches on Barth, or is this at the far end of Barth, down by, I guess, Han and Rose?
Roberto, can you address that, please?
Yes, absolutely. So this is the 400 feet that is down by Han and Road, it is the deeper portion of the drain that's down there. It's just come to light that with the project, it just makes better sense to fill in, fill in those ditches so they don't become nuisance for the residents.
And the residents were definitely in favor of this, correct?
Oh, yeah, the, the ones we talked to, absolutely, we're going to talk to the rest, let them know that, but in most cases, the residents want them filled.
All right, fine, thank you.
Do the Chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb?
Yeah, Roberto, I'd like to thank the contractor that we only have one change order, and most constructions that they're doing, there's usually three or four change orders, so they only have one, so thank you, Roberto.
Thank you.
And if I could, on that note, Mr. Chairman, I think, what a difference when the City of Romulus, Roberto, Kathy, OHM, and our team is managing the project compared to projects where we're not the lead on it, so good job, everybody, and I know the residents appreciate it, we appreciate it, keep up the good work, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wattsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Last action item is a recommendation from Kathy Hood, Assistant DPW Director, and Gary Harris, our Purchasing Director. This one is to concur with the administration to consent, piggyback ideal contract 07B770081. This is to purchase one 2021 Ford F, Ford 250 Transit van, not a 250 Transit van, with options and price at $38,396.0. That's from Gornow Ford, that'll be for DPW Water and Sewer Division. Those funds have been verified and available out of the Motor Vehicle Fund capital outlay.
Do the Chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb?
I'd like to make that motion to concur with administration to purchase the Ford 250 Transit van with options for the price of, as quoted previously.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for the piggyback on M.D. Deal Contract 2021 Ford 250 Transit van. Any discussion? Here, no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion is approved.
Thank you, Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Number six is the clerk's report, I do not have any action items, but as a follow-up, I know that Councilman Wattsworth was inquiring about dates for the fall citywide yard sale. Wattsworth was inquiring about dates for the fall citywide yard sale, and I just want to announce that. Council, you have already taken action for those dates, and those dates are September the 23rd through the 26th. And the rain dates are September 30th through March the 3rd. And with that, Mr. Chair, that concludes the Clerk's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Number seven is the Treasurer's report.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and listening audience. I'd like to just remind everyone that the Treasurer's Office is working on the summer tax bills. All taxpayers, please expect the tax bills by July 1st to your home or businesses. And of course, if you have any questions, you can contact the Treasurer's Office at 734-942-7580. Thank you, and happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there. And that'll be it for my report.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Treasurer.
You're welcome.
Number eight is public comment, and this is the portion of the meeting for those members of the public wishing to address City Council. The raise hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. If you've joined the meeting online, use the raise hand icon from the meeting app. Tap the microphone icon to unmute yourself when acknowledged, and then mute yourself after you have, after you're finished. If you've dialed in from a touchstone phone, press the star nine from your phone to raise your hand and press star six from your phone to mute yourself when acknowledged. And again, press star six to mute yourself when finished. After you've been acknowledged, please state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Upon expiration of your three minutes, you will be muted. Additional time will be upon the approval of the chairperson. And again, as a reminder, citizens may also submit written comments to, by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. And yes, I, we do have one raised hand from the public, Mr. Chair. And that is Ms. Yada.
Okay.
All right. And unmute yourself, Ms. Yada, and go ahead, and you have three minutes.
Hello, hello again. I just wanted to raise some concern with E-course Road with our new Amazon that's been there for a little while now. We have high speeds coming out of there. I've seen the police around in the area a few times, and I know that they're busy. I know, like, I really know this. But I'm a little concerned with some of the speeding that's going on on E-course Road. And they're not just taking it down E-course. When they get frustrated or irritated, they end up coming through the neighborhood. And there's also two vehicles that I'm not going to stay on, say on a public forum. I will come in and talk about those two vehicles. And the reason being is because we know that what's said goes public, and it can be Googled, and I don't want it to go public. But we have two vehicles. One, they're identical vehicles, just different colors. One has a handicap license plate, one has not. And they speed through the neighborhood at a very, very high rate of speed. I am so afraid that one of our children or one of the people that are in the direct care homes are going to get hit by these two individuals. And they, I don't know where they stay at around in the neighborhood, but they're always constantly through here. So I'm sure that plenty of tickets can be given out on E-course Road, especially during the times that Amazon is being let out and during the times that their shifts are changing. But there's also a lot of activity of just speeding in this area. So that's just one of the things that I have that I'm just concerned with is the speeding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do not see any more indication from the public requesting to speak.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we'll close that part out.
Okay, great. Next on the agenda is number nine, unfinished business.
Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I will raise the concern with the E-course Road around the Amazon facility. I understand they have attention to detail in that right now with traffic, but I'll make sure that we get any details on the two vehicles and keep that within the department and try to work. If the lady would please make sure, pass on any, any details that I have. I have regular meetings, myself and her Chief of Staff with the Director of Public Security or Police Chief, and we'll try to make sure that we get those addressed. You know, I guess what I would say is that they can't be everywhere. We know that. But the more our residents will help us, the better job that they can do. We actually have a meeting this week on another specific issue in a neighborhood. So please, if you could, help us with that, and we'll do the best we can to address it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor.
I have no problem giving that information. I just don't want it to be public. So I'll get that information to you as soon as possible. I don't know if y'all remember the vehicle that hit the one lady on Van Born, and the car went up in flames. But that too was a driver that flew through this same exact neighborhood, and it's unfortunate that he took a life because he wasn't caught prior to that. But that same vehicle on Van Born and Miramond, just on the Westland side of it, that same vehicle fly, was flying through this neighborhood as well. And again, unfortunately, someone's life was taken because of that. So I have no problem with it. The kids are just getting younger, and they're just being reckless with their permission to drive, you know. So I'll get that information over.
Thank you.
Um, we are now at number 10, new business. Number 11 for approval is warrant 21-11.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we pay warrant 21-11 in the following amounts. General fund, $48,075.54. Major street fund, $161,611.83. Local street fund, $124,042.41. Public safety fund, $31,936.11. Cable TV, $1,618.23. Mayor Monroe Road Special Assessment, $9,800. Street lighting fund, $47,978.66. Garbage and rubbish collection fund, $91,482.30. CDBG, $312.69. Michigan Indigent Defense Fund, $20,043.33. 9/11 Service Fund, $680.63. NARC Forfeiture State, $1,077.48. Library Fund, $11,513.8. DDA, $25,048.17. Tifa District 2, $13,207.16. Water and Sewer Fund, $346,518.50. Motor Vehicle, $36,292.52. Technology Services, $68,398.97. Retiree Insurance Benefits, $14,406.15. Revolving Fund, $575. Delinquent Personal Property Fund, $50,099.46. Payroll Fund, $166,436.53. Totalling all funds, $1,271,104.75.
Court?
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally to pay warrant number 21-11 for $1,271,154.75. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes, but I had a question.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Webb.
Okay. Maria, are you still on? Maria Ferris?
No.
Okay. Well, I had a resident to call me today, and he had a couple of questions. And I was just wanting Maria to explain it, and I was going to give her the information on it. If she could, it could be maybe a note could be sent to her to call me in the morning first thing so that I can explain it to the resident. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes? Yes. Motion approved.
Okay, and number 12 is communication. And I just want to state, Mr. Chair, before council members begin with their communication, I need to correct the date for the rain dates. I guess I said September 30th through March 3rd. I apologize. So that would be a long, that would be a long city yard sale.
Yeah.
It's, I'm sorry. It's September 30th through October the 3rd.
Okay.
Okay. Those are the, those are the rain dates. And again, the citywide yard sales begin September 23rd, which is a Thursday, and will end that Sunday, September 26th. So my apologies. And again, we're at number 12, communication.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Roscoe?
Yep, I got a couple of things tonight. First of all, this Friday night is we're bringing back movie in the park downtown by the historical park area in that big field down there. So about 7:30, you can start coming on in and finding your seat, and bring your chair, bring your blanket. Movie will start about 9:15, and the movie is The War With Grandpa. And the farmer's market is also going to be down there with concessions, and the class of 2022 will have candy and popcorn. So come on out and enjoy that Friday night, and that's the 18th this week. And also, the following weekend, we have the police and the community together, it's called, their group is, they're having their second annual bike ride on July 24th. And they're going to start at the historical park at 2 o'clock, and it'll go to 5. It's free to all ages. Children under 18 have to be accompanied by an adult older than 18. And you have to wear your helmets, follow the CDC guidelines. They're going to have food and prizes to give away and so on and so forth. But come on out for the second annual bike ride and have a good time. And again, that is put on by the police and the community together. So actually, that's all I have tonight, and I just want to wish all the fathers out there also a happy Father's Day this weekend. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Roscoe.
Yeah, through the chair, through the chair?
Yes, Ms. Tally?
We've had a lot of shout outs today, and I got to add a couple. It's been an amazing week and an amazing weekend. And I want to start off with a street signing we had this past Friday. We had a lot of discussion about this street sign at the last council meeting, a lot. And I'm gonna tell you, that thing went off so good, it was ridiculous. Kathy Hood, I want to do a shout out. You might have caught a lot of grief last week, but it was awesome. Everybody working together. I want to shout out to two people in particular, Craig Plank and Travis Early. We traveled to four different sites. We started at Mr. Sheldon Chandler's site, his sign first. And we were just running and gunning all through all of them, and it was fun. It was actually fun. Well, I'm gonna say fun for me. And we were going to each site, and every site I went to, Travis Early posted, asked to sign, ready to do the unveiling. So thank you, Travis, for being there, being ready to unveil them signs for each of our special residents, and Craig Plank, I saw Jerry Springer out there. But just a shout out to our entire DPW team. What a great day. And thank you, Kathy, for organizing it. Again, I know you took some heat last week, but it went very, very well. So I want to shout out for that. I want to shout out to two recipients that were members of my mother's church, Reverend Reed and Tally. Dwayne Martin and Deacon Nathaniel Butler were members of First Baptist Church. There were members from the church that were there at both street signings, so it was good to see them. I saw them again. I went to her church on Sunday, and it was just good to have that camaraderie over, you know, going to them different street signings to honor their former members. So just shout out to the First Baptist and just to the honorees, all honorees on that day. We talked about Flag Day. It was a beautiful day today, and I was just so honored and privileged to be able to be a part of that. And everybody else who was there, it's an honor to, you know, just to commemorate our flag and what it represents is what's, what it represents. So thank you, Bob McCray, for allowing me to do the invocation. I will pray. Anytime I have an opportunity to pray, I'm praying. So thank you, Bob, for allowing me that. To do that, it was an honor and a privilege to do that. So and everybody who formed that Flag Day, I think Director Kevin Kraus, Bob McCray, everyone who participated and everybody who showed up, thank you. Our veterans, the VFW, I mean, just amazing. So thank you for Flag Day. I want to shout out to, we had a vendor show over the weekend. I mean, it's just so much going on. It's crazy, and it's good. So I want to shout out to the vendor show that went on this past weekend. I got there kind of late. I wasn't able to stay very, very long, but what I saw, I enjoyed. So I want to shout out for that. I want to shout out to Dorit Green. I had a resident call me over the weekend about a matter she had. She lived in Gateway and had a matter that needed immediate, and I mean, immediate attention. A matter she had, I was able to call Dorit Green. I want to shout him out, and Tony Horn, who was able to help this resident, I mean, in a lickety split. I mean, lickety split. So shout out to Dorit Green, coming together as a community to help somebody they did not even know, didn't know her. Help somebody in need. That's what we do. So thank you, Dorit Green and Tony Horn, for your help at their resident over the weekend. And then lastly, we, and I talk about, we got a pumpkin fest coming up. We got a pumpkin fest coming up. We need some help. We need volunteers, and we want to keep our pumpkin fest moving full score, engage and reimage it, like we've been saying. We need to have people involved and engaged. We have a pump, there's a pumpkin fest meeting this Wednesday, 6:30 on Zoom. Please contact Mary Drewer at 734-955-4531. It's coming up in September. We want to make that thing look good. We've been in a pandemic. We didn't have it last year. So let's come together to make our pumpkin fest one of the best ever after post-COVID. Thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to give a shout out to, I know some of the women would know this. My granddaughter, Andrea Anna Barton, Andrea Anna Bowers Barton. She crossed over as AKA Soror. Shout out to her. I see the ladies smiling, Ms. Webb and Ms. Tally. I know you ladies know about that. I know a little bit about it. Congratulations to my daughter. Thank you.
And do the chair, if I may?
Yes.
I would just like to thank the DPW workers as well. And as my colleague stated, Kathy, you did get some heat, but apparently you released that heat on all of us. I had to have an umbrella. It was so hot. But Kathy, I do appreciate you taking into consideration and rearranging how we would attend all of these signed dedications, because when we left Ozganwick, we were on this side of town. And so, you know, but having that 30 minutes in between, I loved it because everyone knew that we had to go. You know how sometimes, you know, they'll say, well, why did the politicians come and they leave early? I don't, a lot of people don't understand, we always have previous engagements. But everyone understood that there was another honorary sign commitment. So it was, it was fun, as my colleague said. We did. We had a a very, very good time. It was busy all last week, but it was also enjoyable. And I appreciate you, Kathy.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Okay, if there's no more communication, it takes us to number 13 adjournment, and the time is 8:22.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wasworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe?
No, it was Eva.
Ms. Webb.
Eva. Okay, I'm sorry, Eva.
Oh, that's okay.
For adjournment, Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yeah.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Do you have votes, yes? We are adjourned. Have a good weekend, and all you fathers, keep doing good work. Treat those women really nice, 'cause they the backbone of us. Thank you.